Welcome to City Hall for the January 7th, 2019, first meeting of 2019. Before we call it a order, we'll have a prayer by Councilman Schreiber and the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible)
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 Well officially called the meeting to order. The mayor is absent this evening, so you get me to fill in. So we'll have a roll call by Mrs. Donaldson.
Fitzwater?
Here.
Graham?
Here.
Hensley?
Here.
Hussey?
Here.
Kimna?
Here.
Mahalovich?
Present.
Prather?
Here.
Schreiber?
Present.
Ward?
Here.
Wiseman?
Present.
Item three, adoption of the agenda. I'd entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
Seconded. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Agenda is adopted. We have item four miscellaneous agenda items. Nothing under that. Item five, public hearings. No public hearings this evening. And item six, appointments by the mayor. The mayor has asked for council consent to appoint Curtis G. Hanrahan as temporary municipal judge until the April 2nd election. I'd entertain a motion to make said appointment.
Motion to approve Curtis G. Hanrahan as a temporary municipal judge.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilman Graham. Seconded by Councilman Mahalovich. Any council discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. The ayes have it. Our temporary municipal judge is Curtis Hanrahan. And we will have a new municipal judge after the election in April. Item seven, presentation from staff, consultants, and invited guests. There's nothing on the agenda this evening. Item eight, announcements by the mayor, council, and staff. I'd quickly announce that the Public Works and Planning Committee will meet this Thursday morning, 7:30 a.m., across the hall for our monthly meeting. Any other announcements from council at this time? And you really do want to get to the football game. 8B, High Street, been selected as an APA Missouri Great Place Honoree. I would turn to Mr. Barron for an update on that.
Thank you. It's my pleasure to announce that High Street has been selected by the Missouri Chapter of the American Planning Association as a Great Place Honoree. There will be a public present or public award presentation within the Capitol Building on March 6th at 11 a.m. I believe we'll be sending that information out for anyone who wishes to attend. I would like to recognize Mr. Alex Rotenberry, who is two seats behind me on Planning Division Staff, who is instrumental in preparing that application and getting this designation for High Street. Thank you.
You say March 6th. At what time?
March 6th at 11 a.m. in the Capitol Building.
Any questions for Mr. Barron? Thank you. Thank you, Alex, for your work on that. Any other announcements this evening? Seeing none. Item nine, the Lincoln University Student Representative Update. Carolyn Magaro is not here this evening. I would announce that classes resume next Monday on campus here in Jefferson City. And if you have not attended a men's or women's basketball game this season, I would highly encourage you to do so. I believe the next time they're at home is later in, is it next Thursday?
The 24th.
24th. So be sure to check them out. Both of them are playing very well right now and could use some support. Item 10, presentation from the gallery on specific bills or resolutions.
This will be later?
That'll be later. Alrighty. Item 11, consent agenda. Entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved by Councilwoman Ward. Seconded by Councilwoman Schreiber. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed say nay. Motion carries. Item 12, bills introduced. Bill 2018-91.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a $64,232.80 agreement with Axon for the purchase of the TASER Assurance Plan.
Chief Schrader.
Thank you. This is, and we're requesting an extension. We've had this similar plan for the past five years. We want to enter into a second five-year plan with Axon, which is actually TASER, it's on, which is actually TASER International. They've just changed names. So this is, as I said, a five-year program requires, or we are also expanding to have 40 TASERS rather than the 20 that we've had for the past five years. This also includes maintenance. The payment comes from our general fund maintenance line item. The initial year costs $8,692, followed by four consecutive years at the rate of $13,885.20. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Schrader? Seeing none, we'll move on to Bill 2018-92.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute an agreement with SiteMed in an amount of $65,645 for providing firefighter, health, and wellness physicals compliant with NFPA 1582.
Chief Schofield.
Thank you. As the clerk indicated, the funding for this grant, funding for this new contract for comprehensive annual firefighter physicals is from 90% by a grant, which allowed us to expand it slightly for this year to include NFPA-recommended heavy metal blood testing. And so that would be a one-time expansion of services that we're pleased to be able to do this year, and it requires a new contract with SiteMed. Happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Chief Schofield? Seeing none. Thank you, chief. Move on to Bill 2018-93.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri changing, amending, and modifying the zoning map of the zoning code of the city of Jefferson by rezoning 8.43 acres of land addressed as 1101 East Capitol Avenue from M1 Light Industrial to PUD Planned Unit Development and approving a preliminary PUD plan for said property.
Mr. Barron.
Thank you. This property is the old International Shoe Factory building located on the north side of Capitol Avenue, about three blocks east of Lafayette Street. The property is currently zoned in M1, which is a light industrial zoning district. This bill would rezone the property to a PUD, a Planned Unit Development District, and approve a preliminary PUD development for the property. The building would be retained basically as-is with a number of different uses contained within the building. Basically different uses for each floor within the five-story building. There are some floor plans contained within your council packets that outline the various uses on the floor. The first floor being largely restaurant, bar, various indoor entertainment uses. The second floor being more entertainment uses. The third floor being office space and event space. And then the fourth and fifth floors of the building being converted to residential apartment units. Various site improvements proposed as well, including parking to serve those various uses, and outdoor zip line, haunted trail, and mini golf types of operations. There is a phasing plan contained within the PUD plan with the various improvements being conducted over three phases. The first phase consisting of the first floor, those entertainment and restaurant uses, and the fourth and fifth floors, the residential apartments. Then Phase Two being the two, the second and third floors, so the event space and office space. And then the third phase being basically the outdoor uses. This is a slide from the Central East Side Neighborhood Plan, which is a component of the city's comprehensive plan. The purpose of the slide is basically to call out that this property was identified as being ideal for a mixed-use type of use category. And so this proposal largely matches the recommendations of the adopted comprehensive plan. This item was recommended for approval by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting of December 13th and is scheduled for a public hearing on January 22nd. I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Any questions for Mr. Barron at this time? I assume in Councilman Mahalovich's retirement, he's working on his ax-throwing training to be ready for the fun factory, right?
There's also three-pin bowling, if you're not familiar with that.
Three-pin bowling. I'm excited. This'll be good. Bills 94 through 97 all deal with charter. Would it be okay with the council to just have them all first read and then have Mr. Moleman address them? And we can have a conversation? Or do you want to go one by one through them? Does anybody have a preference? Well, let's just do a first reading of 2018-94 through 97, and then we'll turn it over to Mr. Moleman for leading it off.
2018-94, an ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving an amended and restated charter of the city of Jefferson and submit such charter to a vote of the citizens of the city of Jefferson. 2018-95, an ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri submitting an amendment to the charter of the city of Jefferson relating to term limits on the offices of council member and mayor to a vote of the citizens of the city of Jefferson. 2018-96, an ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri submitting an amendment to the charter of the city of Jefferson relating to conflicts of interest to a vote of the citizens of the city of Jefferson.
Mr. Moleman.
If you take a look at the bill summary, first going over Bill 2018-094, this is Proposition A, which could be considered general changes affecting the charter. General changes include gender neutralization, eliminating unnecessary dates, pinning candidate qualification dates not to the date of election, but rather to the date of filing, which will assist in enforcement of candidate qualifications. So these are general changes that appear throughout the charter document. Specific changes in A include a change to the city clerk provision. Originally, the Charter Review Advisory Committee recommended removing a residential requirement. However, a work session of this body asked for an amendment which is reflected in the attached bill. What this council asked for was an amendment which allowed a grace period for the city clerk, and also to include matching residency grace periods, but nevertheless requirements for residency within the city for both the city administrator and the city councillor. So what we have is a, three separate amendments in the charter that allow any person appointed to the positions of city clerk, city administrator, or city councillor to not have to reside in the city at the time of appointment, but require them to establish residency within the city within six months of appointment unless waived or extended by a forfeits vote of the city council. So that applies to the city clerk, city councillor, city administrator. This essentially codifies in the charter what is already in the city code for the city administrator. This is a new requirement for the city councillor and is a loosening of the rules for the city clerk. Relating to Section 3.11, legislative procedures, what the committee suggested was a system for passage of bills where there was a very strong primary bill sponsor who had exclusive control over matters such as placing the bill on the informal calendar. There was some concern, however, no affirmative vote on this particular section following from the work session. So the bill contains Section 3.11E as recommended by the Charter Review Commission, or sorry, from the Charter Review Committee. However, attached to the bills are Bill Amendment Sheet 1A and Bill Amendment Sheet 1B. Bill Amendment Sheet 1A changes the recommendation of the committee to use a separate, a different type of sponsor system, which allows a bill to have an unlimited amount of cosponsors, with each cosponsor having the same powers as it relates to a bill, and also would allow that bills be pulled from the informal calendar upon a affirmative vote of the city council, even without bill sponsor support. Bill Amendment Sheet 1B is mutually exclusive to 1A, and what it actually does, it strips out a lot of the more particular rules relating to informal calendar and bill sponsors. It leaves really kind of the basics for bill passage and approval, and requires that the city council review its procedures and rules for approval of legislation on an annual basis with a caveat that if that review does not happen, the rules that aren't existed from the previous year would remain in, would remain in effect. Section 4.1C is the same as, same as recommended from the Charter Review Committee, and it would require that the mayor cannot hold any other city officer employment within the city. This matches restrictions relating to council members. Section 4D1 is a new subsection relating to removal of the mayor. It also closely mirrors provisions that relate to removal of council members, but requires a supermajority of four-fifths. Section, changes to Section 4.4. What that essentially does is it codifies the city, the mayor's ability to remove members of committees, boards, or commissions for misconduct or neglect of duty, which appears throughout the charter and also in city code, that coalesces that power into one spot. It makes it clear that the mayor has that authority for all city boards, commissions, and committees. Changes to Section 5.1 clarifies that the city's, city administrator's entire compensation, not just the salary, must be approved by the mayor and city council. Section 5.1, we've already covered relating to city administrator, city administrator residence requirements, but that is essentially a codification of what is in the charter of what is already in the city code. Section 5.2 are technical changes related to the duties of the city administrator. Section 6.5, in addition to adding the residency requirement for the office of the city council, also changes the title of city councillor to the city attorney. This, both of these were the results of the council votes at the work session. Section 12.9 is a change to how calculation of time is done in the city charter and the city code. Is a streamlined process as opposed that looks to, just sets a general rule that days are counted in calendar days unless otherwise specified. Currently, what we have is a situation where you have to look at the number of days that is specified and then determine whether or not calendar days or business days apply. This is a simplification of those calendar rules. Section, changes to Section 13.5 is a grandfathering clause that specify that any changes in the charter that affect the qualifications of office would only affect people who do no longer have qualifications of a particular office after the termination of their current term. So no one is going to be kicked out of office or lose eligibility for office in the middle of a term. Those changes only go into effect after the term is completed. And those are the changes for Proposition A, Bill 094.
Discussion at this point in time on 94? Or do we want to wait and talk through the rest? Councilman Graham?
I think we can talk through the rest, but I would like to sum it all up after we get to number 97, because I'm not comfortable with moving these forward. But I do want to hear 95, 96, and 97.
Alrighty.
Very well. I'm sorry, do we need a, do we need a first reading of the next bills? Okay, thank you, sorry. Proposition B remains as was suggested, recommended by the Charter Review Advisory Committee. Establishes, eliminates lifetime term limits, which is currently in the city charter, and replaces it with a single-term waiting period. So currently, a city council member or mayor, once they serve eight years in that position, are then forever prohibited from holding that position again. Those term limits carry out through the life of the person. This changes that system to require that after a person serves either four terms as a city council person, or two terms as a mayor, to then sit out a term. The thought is, is that this would require turnover in the council and the mayor positions, but not act as lifetime bans or prohibitions from someone who would want to serve again. And I'd be happy to answer any particular questions on that bill.
Any particular questions on this one? Let's keep rolling.
Proposition C, Bill number 96, relates to the position of city prosecutor. Originally, the Charter Review Advisory Committee made a recommendation that the city prosecutor would be an appointed position, and then also had a recommendation that removal provisions be added to the city charter. Currently, the city prosecutor is subject only to removal by recall. As a result of the vote at the work session, this body asked for an amendment that changes back the city prosecutor position into a, or rather keeps the city prosecutor as an elected position. So those provisions are unchanged. But, so what Proposition C does is, all it does is, all it does is add the removal provisions, which closely match the removal provisions for the office of mayor. It will require a forfeits vote of the council to remove the city prosecutor, and only for those reasons that are listed in the charter.
Any questions on this one in particular? Alright, we'll move on to Proposition D.
Proposition D relates to conflicts of interest. First of all, it changes the name of that section from personal financial conflicts to conflicts of interest, and then adds a new subsection which would prohibit city officials and employees from voting or acting on contracts with other political subdivisions or nonprofits where the city official or employee sits on the governing body of the subdivision or the nonprofit. So this essentially takes a conflict, a current conflict of interest provision that only relates to financial interests, and it expands it to situations where a city official or employee also sits on the governing body of another city, school district, political subdivision of some sort, or nonprofit. So even though there's not a direct financial component, it still recognizes that there could be a conflict of interest.
Any questions on this one in particular? And before we jump in, Mr. Moleman, could you walk through the calendar of what it looks like to put something on the ballot and what our timeframe is?
Sure, thanks. So when this was initially discussed with the April general municipal election, in a typical calendar year, you will have the ability to have a first reading and then second reading at the two meetings in January. Because of a quirk of the calendar this year, the ballot certification date falls on the second Tuesday, or sorry, not the second Tuesday, the third Tuesday of January, January 22nd, and those are due at 5:00 on January 22nd. Normally, the city would meet on the third Monday of the month, but that being the Martin Luther King Holiday, the city council meeting has been pushed off to the 22nd. And so the, if we were to take the normal procedure and second read these at the January 22nd meeting, we would miss that deadline by an hour, hour and a half. And so that is the reason why that these bills are checkmarked. If the city council wanted to put them on the April 2nd general municipal election, they would either need to get approved tonight, or a special meeting would have to be called for second reading and approval before the January 22nd ballot certification deadline at 5:00.
Thank you, Mr. Moleman. I guess I would turn it over to the council for any comments, discussion. Councilman Graham?
Yes, I do remember having Yes, uh, I do remember having the conversation, uh, last year, uh, in regards to, uh, these four items, and I, I thought that we had said that we would have more than just one meeting to talk about these very, uh, serious changes, uh, dealing with our charter, and for me to learn that we are asked to, and I understand the reason why, uh, that we're asked tonight to, to vote to move these forward without having that public, uh, conversation or, uh, or, uh, another in-depth conversation with, um, individuals who had served on that committee or on the, on the charter certainly concerns me. So, I am not, uh, for, I am not for moving, uh, this forward tonight, and if we do have to have a special meeting, if you want to beat a deadline, I really don't care about a deadline, but if that's what the council would like to do, uh, then, um, I think that we should set a separate, another meeting, uh, to give the citizens the opportunity to come and share with us their concerns, as well as the, uh, charter, the original charter committee members and those who also served on the committee. Uh, I just don't feel comfortable with, uh, moving this forward tonight. That's just my opinion. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Fitzwater?
I would concur with my colleague from the fourth ward, and I think we agreed to put it on the agenda for tonight to allow council to have an opportunity. I agree, I think the understanding was there was going to be more debate. I do think a couple of them are probably innocuous and we agree with, but I think it's more the process and Bill 94 that has drawn the most attention. Plus, we do have some additional issues that, that we did ask not even to put on the agenda for tonight because they need a lot more vetting before I think they're ready for the, for the group and... I'm with, with Councilman Graham that clock doesn't bother me as much as doing it right, and, you know, my preference would be to try to put together a package and then take that to the voters. Now, I understand there's a lot of issues and they're going to be separated, so there's a negative to that also, but I still think there's additional discussion that needs to be had before we change the charter of the city. And we can make the tweaks for the, the minor things, but I hate to keep going back to the voters if we can do it right and then take a proposal. The other comment is, we had a couple of the original members of the charter committee involved, and the most recent, and they, they were very valuable. I think some additional original members have stepped up and said, you know, they would like to have a comment, so although they've had opportunity, I mean, I think extending another opportunity to them would, would be worthwhile. I'm willing to have an additional meeting also if we can meet a timeframe, but again, my overall goal is that we do it right and do what's right for the residents of the city.
Councilman Hensley?
Thank you. Um, with respect to any of these provisions or the, the proposed provisions that, uh, we think would be controversial or that would require considerable additional council discussion, I, I would certainly agree that pushing it forward tonight, um, is not the thing to do. I'm, I'm remembering like, one of the very first meetings I attended, uh, when I got on the council last April was one of these, uh, Charter Review Commission meetings. Uh, so, uh, while my time here might not be as long as everyone else, uh, this issue has been very active for my entire existence on this council. Uh, and I know that a number of these items are, um, as Councilman Fitzwater said, fairly innocuous, they're cleanups. Um, you know, if, if we're gonna, if we are, as a council, going to commit to having, uh, at least one more public work session, um, on this, uh, and have time to take a vote on all of these items before the 22nd, I would not have a problem with holding off on all of them, giving the public another opportunity to come forward, uh, and, and voice their concerns about any of these proposed, uh, provisions. Um, but if we can't commit to that, uh, I, I think, uh, everyone in this city has, uh, the right to a, a charter that is, um, uh, clean and up to date, and if, if we have, um, 80% of a clean package that we can move forward, and the rest of it would have to wait until a future election, um, I, I don't know why we wouldn't, uh, move forward the items that are non-controversial and save the more controversial ones for additional discussion. Um, why we didn't have additional, uh, meetings and hearings, um, before now, I have no idea. Uh, but, um, that's where I stand. So, if, if we're going to commit to airing all of this one more time and then taking a vote in, uh, in time to meet the January 22nd deadline, then great, but if not, let's, let's go with what we have at this point, and, and if, if additional changes come up that, uh, as a council, we believe, uh, merit presenting, uh, to the public, then so be it at a later date.
I just think that we owe it to the citizens who we, I know I'd say we was going to have more than one meeting to, to talk about something as important as, as this charter, um, which I view as seems like our constitution, so I, um, certainly hope that we can have another discussion, and at that night, we can vote to move it forward. We still meet the deadline, but I just don't think that we should do it here tonight without putting it out in the paper and on the different outlets that we're going to be hosting another meeting to talk about these very serious changes that we're going to be presenting to the voters to vote on, so, and I, in that.
And I would clarify that to take something up tonight, it takes a request of the bill sponsor or some member of this body, but two members can object to it and therefore it can't be done. Based on the comments that I'm hearing, I'm guessing that there's at least two members that would object from said action this evening without forcing the issue. So, I don't think taking up these propositions this evening is probably an option for us. Councilman Mahalovich?
Um, so if we, if we wanted to have a second opportunity for the public to see and hear, uh, these, uh, changes, our proposed changes, um, what, what date would be the most appropriate? Is the, is the 21st out of question because it's a, a holiday?
What about next month? Some people might travel or...
City Hall is closed that day.
Three-day weekend, some people may travel.
So, what are the viable dates? We may, we may already be out of viable dates.
Either the...
Monday, January 14th an option.
The 14th or the 17th.
Or Thursday, the 17th.
I say the 14th or the 17th, that's a Monday or Thursday.
Is there any objection to having a special meeting next Monday, January 14th? You will not be here. Does that prohibit you from...
I just wanted to note that I will not be here on the 17th and, uh, or the evening on the 17th, so one of us will have a conflict.
Okay. Two gone on the 17th, one gone on the 14th, but... Councilman Mahalovich?
I pro, I propose to move to postpone the following charter amendments to, uh, having a meeting on the 14th at 6:00 to consider those charter amendments.
Second.
It's been moved by Councilman Mahalovich to have a special meeting on Monday, January 14th at 6:00 PM to discuss the four charter amendments presented this evening, seconded by Councilman Hensley. Any further discussion on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. The ayes appear to have it, the ayes do have it. Motion carries. We will have a special meeting next Monday at 6:00 PM.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Councilman Graham. Does that work for you, Mr. Moulman?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I would implore council to review, bring your comments, questions, discussions, and I think it'd be wise for us to build in some public comment period, or if we have some invited guests, um, but my, I'm assuming the desire would not be to be here for the entirety of the evening. Mr. Moulman, would you extend an invitation to the Charter Review Committee that met this past summer to...
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Councilman Mahalovich?
Yes.
Great. Anything else on this particular item? Thank you for that. We'll move on to Item 13, Bills Pending, 2018-83.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a supplemental agreement with the Missouri Highways and Transportation Commission for transportation alternatives funds.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Uh, this is a time extension, is what the supplement's for, to the, the summer, June 18th, and allows to build a sidewalk, uh, grant project on Missouri Boulevard, basically from, uh, the Chipotle, uh, to the Sub Shop, if you know where that area is.
Any questions for Mr. Marash? Any council discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Just, just one vote, Rick. Bill passes. Moving on to Bill, um, 2018-84.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a professional services agreement with Midwest ATC Service Incorporated for the purpose of providing air traffic control services at the Jefferson City Memorial Airport for the period of October 1, 2018, through June 30th, 2019.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Clerk said it well, but, uh, basically the costs are seventy, just under $7,500 a month, which is 18% of the actual cost, so it's a grant agreement, and, uh, those costs have been budgeted in our budget.
Any questions, council discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Bill passes. Moving on to Bill 2018-85.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 by adding a yield sign to McKay Court.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Uh, uh, bill that came through our Transportation and Traffic Commission, where a citizen requested a yield sign at McKay Court. It's been approved.
Councilman Fitzwater, do you have a 23-part question on this one? Any council discussion or questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to 0, bill passes. Moving on to Bill 2018-87.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri amending Chapter 19 by modifying signage at the Mulberry Street, Elm Street intersection.
Mr. Marash?
Thank you. Uh, this would change the stop sign to a yield sign on Mulberry Street and basically staff-initiated, which would, uh, be a future bicycle route, signed as a future bicycle route and help that, uh, movement proceed.
Any council questions, comment? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
And by a vote of 10 to 0, that bill passes. Move on to Bill 2018-89.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a redevelopment agreement with Jefferson City Public School District.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you. This ordinance approves a redevelopment agreement with Jefferson City Public Schools, um, primarily relates to the construction of a connector road between Mission Drive and Creek Trail, uh, adjacent to Capital City High School. Um, it also addresses, um, the vacation of Union Street and Lewis and Clark, uh, Drive adjacent to, um, current Jefferson City High School and Lewis and Clark, uh, Middle School, uh, respectively. Um, this agreement, uh, directs $750,000 from the city council in addition to $750,000 from Cole County from the, uh, capital improvement sales tax for construction of the street, and also approves a reduction in building permit fees, uh, on work at Capital City High School and Jefferson City High School, um, in an amount of 50%, uh, which is about $130,000 in, in benefit to the city, or, sorry, to the school district. And if, uh, there's any further questions, I'm happy to address them.
Any questions or comment? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to 0, the bill passes. Bill 2018-90.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a master license and cooperative agreement with Jefferson City Parks and Recreation Commission, Jefferson City Parks and Recreation Foundation, and Bicentennial Bridge LLC.
Mr. Moulman?
Thank you. This, uh, bills, this bill approves a master license and a cooperative agreement between the city, uh, the Jefferson City Parks and Recreation Foundation, Parks, uh, Parks and Recreation Commission, and Bicentennial Bridge LLC, which is a wholly-owned LLC, uh, owned, uh, exclusively by the Chamber of Commerce. This agreement would, uh, provide for the construction of a, uh, of a pedestrian bridge between the state, uh, Capitol Complex and Adrian Island. Uh, the building project will be undertaken by Bicentennial Bridge LLC, um, using a construction manager, manager-at-risk, uh, building delivery, uh, method. Um, it, uh, provides a license for, uh, the LLC to construct that work and requires that, uh, that any contract to construct that work, um, comply with several different, uh, requirements that are applicable to public works projects, even though the, uh, the bridge is being constructed with, um, with a private donation. Um, it also compels the, uh, Parks and Recreation Commission to develop a park on Adrian's Island contemporaneously with the construction of a bridge, and sets forth a, um, a means to, um, provide for the maintenance and upkeep of both the bridge and the, uh, park on Adrian's Island using, uh, funds, uh, mostly capital improvement, uh, sales tax funds, uh, to upkeep, uh, those items, uh, upkeep of the bridge and the, and the park on Adrian's Island would be the responsibility of the Parks, Parks and Recreation Commission. Um, and essentially what, uh, what this agreement does, it sets up a mechanism where the, uh, Parks and Recreation Commission is entitled to withdraw $10,000 a year for, for those upkeep, uh, purposes, and then any, uh, any amounts in addition to, uh, $10,000 a year would have to be approved by both the commission and the city council, so that there's, uh, that way there is a cooperative effort to make sure that the, uh, that the bridge and the park are being, um, maintained in a, in an appropriate manner. Um, it's supposed to be a high-profile addition to the city's, uh, to the city's parks and then tourism, um, uh, portfolio, and so, uh, maintenance, uh, is necessary, and this agreement sets up a relationship to make sure that it's, uh, ongoing for, for the long term.
Any questions for Mr. Moulman? Councilman Mahalovich?
I think, uh, one point is, uh, of clarification is necessary, that, um, uh, under a previous sales tax on specifically in the paper, it noted this as a portion, uh, to be voted on, and the voters approved the sales tax with that item included. So, uh, this is voter-approved dollars that are used for that maintenance portion of the bridge.
Correct, correct. So, these are sales tax issues, um, and I believe there's three different sales tax issues that approved either, um, riverfront access, trail, uh, trail development...
I think one point of clarification is necessary, that under a previous sales tax, specifically in the paper, it noted this as a portion to be voted on, and the voters approved the sales tax with that item included. So this is voter-approved dollars that are used for that maintenance portion of the bridge.
Correct, correct. So these are sales tax issues, and I believe there's three different sales tax issues that approved either riverfront access, trail development, or I think that covers it. And so those funds were specifically allocated for this project but never expended, so they've been sitting there for upwards of 30 years. So these are previously identified by the taxpayer dollars for this project, and instead of going to initial construction, which is being handled by private donations, those previously approved amounts are now going to maintenance of the project.
Any further comments, questions? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Vote of 10 to 0, the bill passes. Nothing on the informal calendar this evening. We'll move on to Item 15, Resolutions. Item A, Resolution 2018-26.
A resolution of the City of Jefferson, Missouri adopting policies and procedures for the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program.
Ms. Abbott.
Thank you. This resolution adopts and updates policies and procedures for the administration of the Community Development Block Grant Program. This is previously, this is done each year around this time. The policy and procedures manual does not replace federal guidelines or regulations. It just mainly provides a format to inform clients and guide staff on proper administration procedures. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Abbott? I would entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2018-26.
So moved.
Moved by Councilman Graham, seconded by Councilman Schreiber. Any questions or comment on the resolution? Nobody wants Ms. Abbott to go through all 56 pages one by one?
Roll call.
Roll call, please.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to 0, the resolution passes. Item B, Resolution 2018-27.
A resolution of the city council of the City of Jefferson, Missouri approving an application for a planning project through the Historic Preservation Fund Grant in an amount of up to $25,000.
Ms. Abbott.
I have an extensive presentation for this one. The city desires to apply for a Historic Preservation Fund Grant offered by the State Historic Preservation Office, and for the purpose of hiring a structural engineer to survey the buildings downtown to determine the structural integrity of the properties within the Missouri State Capitol Historic District. This is merely an application at this point. The application does not obligate the city to accept the funds, and therefore this particular resolution would have no fiscal impact. The grant is a 40% match by means of cash and/or in-kind services, which at the time of grant acceptance would be identified if so desired. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions for Ms. Abbott? Seeing none, or... Mr. Croll.
Sorry, but just for clarification, that would be voluntary? The property owners obviously would be...
Oh, yes. It would be voluntary for the property owners to request the services of the hired structural engineer.
No questions. I entertain a motion to approve Resolution 2018-27.
So moved.
It's been moved by Councilman Graham, seconded by Councilman Moulman Ward. Further discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Hensley?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Kimna?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Schreiber?
Aye.
Ward?
Aye.
Wiseman?
Aye.
Fitzwater?
Aye.
By a vote of 10 to 0, that resolution is approved. Item 16, Presentations from the Gallery on Other Topics. I've got Mr. Ken Quathem here to speak. We've joked about rushing through tonight, but please do not rush your comments. We're here to serve you, so you have three minutes to address, and we can ask questions as well afterwards. So please take your time.
Dear councilmembers and Police Chief Schrader, my name is Ken Quathem. I am the co-chairman of the Neighborhood Watch for the Old Munichburg area. I've been given the opportunity to speak here tonight, and I want to touch on just two important topics that mean the most to me and as well as my neighbors. I have a bit of concern for the welfare of my neighbors when it comes to the criminal activity and the drug traffic. Number one, the crime in my neighborhood is becoming a serious nuisance. December 13, 2018, I woke up to hearing gunshots at 11:00 PM, come to find out the next day that a good friend of mine was one of the victims who was shot. Spent three weeks in ICU at a university hospital in Columbia. He was told that he might not ever walk again due to his gunshot wounds, but by the grace of God, he's walking at this time. Number two, drug activity in my neighborhood is absolutely ridiculous. Two houses down from me is a definite drug house. I've personally witnessed numerous drug transactions and even been offered drugs myself while sitting on my front porch, which I find very offensive since I don't do any drugs. I've been in contact with Officer McReynolds and Officer Hagemeier of the JCPD in regards to this, to essentially no avail. I believe the police department needs to step up the drug patrols in this area other than just by doing drive-bys. I mean, I understand that my area's not the only area in town. In conclusion, being co-chairman of the Neighborhood Watch in Old Munichburg, I'm very passionate about the safety and the security of my neighborhood. I would like to see this neighborhood brought back to what it once was, an amazing neighborhood where people don't have to worry about crime and drugs. With this being said, I want you all to know that I will do everything within my legal right to protect my household, period. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And I would say thank you for your service on the Neighborhood Watch. Is there any council questions or comment? Chief Schrader, is there anything to add?
Before Chief says anything, I do want to say thank you for coming forward to address us with those very serious concerns. And as chairman of the public safety, I know that our police take those things very seriously. Just because we don't see an immediate reaction doesn't mean that they're not doing something about whatever the issues may be. Sometimes it may take, and I'm just speaking from me, this is not from a police officer because I don't know that, but I know that sometimes you have to build a case instead of just going in and absolutely getting nothing. You want to be able to, I think, to actually nail the person with something. But I believe if you've talked to those officers, I'm sure that something is being done. We may not see it right now, but I can probably assure you that something is being done as far as being watched and trying to get something on those individuals. But I do thank you for coming forward and sharing that, and like I said, I will follow up with Chief as well, too. But sometimes we don't see things happening, but things behind the scenes are really happening.
Councilman Moulman Ward.
I would like to thank you also for coming forward. Ken is my neighbor. I do chair this Neighborhood Watch, and when Ken moved into the neighborhood this summer, he became very active in the Neighborhood Watch and a very valued member and eyes. So I did ask him to help me assist in the area, to help be those eyes and to help get information out to the neighbors. So I do appreciate you being proactive and caring. I'd also like to agree with Councilman Graham's comments. Our PD is a wonderful department, and they are doing a lot. Unfortunately, you know, they have to work within the laws, too, and we have to be patient. I know we live there, and we want the best for our homes and our family and our neighbors, but sometimes we just have to be patient and try to be the voice and the eyes and just the champions and just wait for, I know, wait and just hope that nothing bad happens. But thank you very much. I look forward to working with you in the future, too.
Any other... Councilman Mahalovich.
And I feel really good about Council Lady Ward's work in that area and forming a watch in another portion of the South Side. There's a group that meets with us every four months and addresses our concerns, and I'm not sure we need to step up and do the same thing on that side of Broadway, but I do appreciate you coming, and I'm sorry to hear about your friend's accident, and I hope that all is well there, and that continue to be vigilant and continue to contact us and other council with regard to your needs in the South Side.
Thank you, sir. There were no other speakers signed up for this evening. Item 17 is council and staff discussion of presentation topics, which I believe we just had. Item 18, nothing on our new business. Item 19, approval of closed session minutes from December 17, 2018, closed session. I'd entertain a motion to approve.